People do find us sensible, if not hard-nosed. We have a definite vision of where we're going and we have a definite goal. And consistent with not overburdening staff and consistent with making use of the resources that we have available, we're headed there. Someday, we hope to be there. That may not be in my lifetime, but I hope it is.
Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator, I have two distinct questions, if I may ask them one at a time. Just so I am clear on this, as I read this, Section Two, in general, prohibits the discharge, use, so forth, by anybody of hazardous materials. While Section Three prohibits the storage of hazardous materials by, if you work back through the definitions, basically, commercial users or generators, not anyone else, except for the heating tanks. So Section Three, because of your definition of hazardous material or waste, generator or user, applies primarily to commercial use. Is that correct?
That's correct.
While Section Two, which is the discharge of hazardous materials, applies to everybody.
That's right. I don't, I really cannot make a distinction between a non-commercial entity releasing deliberately or having an accidental release that, into the atmosphere, into the ground, whatever, of a material, and a commercial release. A release is a release, and it will, if it's hazardous enough, it will kill as surely if it's released from the hands of a citizen who is not a commercial, is not involved in commerce, as it will from...
I just want to be clear, that is, that those two sections have those two separate definitions. Now, if I may follow up, I guess it does concern me a little bit that there is no, some sort of practical, practical definition of a minimum discharge or release, because, to make an extreme example, if you go and purchase a can of oven cleaner, which is treated as hazardous material by the stores that sell it, and then you go and use it in your oven, thereby discharging those contents, you are technically in violation of this bylaw.
That's accepted, yes.
You agree with what I'm saying?
We are technically in violation. We can't be in everyone's...
No, I'm not saying that you're doing anything wrong, but I'm saying that it concerns me that there is, I guess to amplify a little bit of Mr. Flood's comments, that there is no practical way of drawing a line here somewhere.
Being under the gun and not, not thinking as one of my colleagues does, who is a lawyer. He points out to me that that, the case you chose anyway is an ordinary household use. In, and it's...
Yes, and?
And it's exempted.
Well...
We'll get to the number in a minute.
Well, may I follow with a separate question? It seems to me, and I think I've said this several town meetings before, that the largest discharge of chemicals in tonnage in Acton is probably residential use of fertilizer. Have we ever made any kind of estimates of what that is, in terms of the overall problem? Because any discharge by any commercial entity these days is regulated at the state level, at the federal level, must be reported, and so forth, you've heard it. There is no such requirement for residential use. As a matter of fact, this bylaw specifically allows the use of herbicides and pesticides, provided you follow the label and so forth. The vast majority of the land area in Acton is residential. I don't have any idea in my head of how many pounds per acre people use of fertilizer, but it seems to me that, in the aggregate, that's probably the highest total discharge of chemicals into the ground, into the water in Acton. And I'm simply asking the question, have you, in looking at this problem, made any estimate of what that is?
There's been no specific estimate that I'm aware of, in terms of tonnage, pounds, or whatever. Now, I wanted to get a comment from Doug before, on this too.
Okay.
My memory is a little faulty here. Doug points out that we've had it virtually in the bylaw, then we found out that the state will not allow us to regulate it, so, I don't care. Yes, Joe?
Okay. As to herbicides and pesticides, a recent decision of the State Supreme Court has held that the state regulations preempt any regulation by the local authorities. As to fertilizers, not entirely clear, nor is it entirely clear as to whether they're hazardous to the environment. We've seen some conflicting information on that, but if the information becomes clearer in the future, I think we'll be back with another amendment.
Just to make one brief comment, I'm just saying that in order to say, you know, have we looked at the overall problem and are we writing a very elaborate, and I'm not faulting you for doing it, but very elaborate and perhaps very difficult to enforce bylaw, to control what may turn out to be only a fraction of the overall problem? That concerns me, and the fact that there are no realistic minimal discharge amounts that would at least tell people what the rules of the game are before they are held in violation, that concerns me. Thank you.
Mr. Podman.
Mr. Moderator, may I make a very quick personal observation, and directed especially to the skeptics, the handful of skeptics under the article on open town meeting? I think this debate has been an absolutely superb example of the way an open town meeting should work, and I think George Emmons and the others should be commended, and also the audience. I saw a bloody little seat screaming during all of this, and I think you've just done a great job.
Gentleman at the back.
Yes, Joe Carrettenuto again from Mohegan Road. It seems to me that a lot of the criticism toward this article seems to be that it's not, either not specific enough or not stringent enough, and I'd just like to point out that it seems to be a lot better than what we have. And if I were to vote against this, this is my question, how long would it be before something better came along? Would I not be better off voting yes, and then letting the better amendments come as they come, rather than voting no and letting the less than satisfactory current standards remain?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Emmons, if you'd like to answer that question.
I really don't know where to begin. Would you rephrase it very distinctly?
Rephrase. If I were to vote no, the article which, after seeing what you've added, I would say is insufficient, would stand. If I were to vote yes, would that mean that further work on this to make it more stringent or more specific would be negated?
If you vote no, then we'll go back to the present bylaw. And if, in your opinion, that is not as good as the present one, then that would be the situation. We will revert to the present bylaw, regardless of what your opinion is of it and this. And obviously, the intent is always to improve on what exists. That was the intent in coming here in the first place, that will be the intent in the future, is to find those areas where, because of changing conditions in the world, or oversight, or lack of foresight on our part, or whatever, we need to improve this, and then we'll be back to ask for improvements and changes, as are required. Unless, there's one exception, unless it fits within the regulatory powers that are already given to either the fire chief or the Board of Health in the present bylaw. There's implementing, implementing regulations that can be comprehended within this bylaw, and if it can be done at an implementing level, then the board usually does that. If it goes, if it just can't be fit in there, and that's a decision that is made in committee and with legal counsel, then it has to come back here. I hope I've done some justice to your question.
Yes, in that case, Mr. Emmons, it seems to me that a vote in favor of this article is the only way to go, if you want any improvement, and it seems to me it's called for.
Gentlemen, excuse me, the gentleman at the front microphone.
Thank you. My name's Phil McKenna Sullivan, Winchester Drive. I have some concerns similar to other ones that have been expressed here tonight about the bylaw being overly broad, in terms of how it can be applied to everyday living, I guess. But my question is, is the existing bylaw contain similar language on, in terms of permitted uses, discharge requirements? In other words, if we vote this down tonight, are we in effectly have the same law anyway? And many of the things that we're discussing as being issues are really moot point, because will, there in the current existing bylaw?
The, a number of the definitions have their origin in the existing bylaw and have been amplified over the existing bylaw. The, a number of sections, for example, the tanks, have been essentially reworked from scratch, and there have been other sections in which we have added as we thought were required. So, what will be the status if we, if we say no tonight? It will, again, it will revert to the, to the present bylaw, which, in some sense, is a subset of what you have here in front of you. It's, the definitions are contained in the present bylaw for the most part, and even amplified upon.
Okay, well, in your summary of changes that you presented earlier, it didn't really talk to more restrictive uses of, what I'm saying is, it didn't seem that the changes you've made add any more restrictions to normal residential use or retail sale of hazardous substances. And consequently, voting this, voting for this bylaw change tonight really doesn't affect, doesn't change the practices of retail, storage, or residential use of chemicals, or, excuse me, hazardous substances.
Well, some of the residential usages have changed. I pointed out to you the...
Home heating oil?
The home heating oil, that's correct. And that, that is a particular concern, because those are in the ground, and many of them may well be scattered in areas where they would, if they leaked undetected for long enough, end up in, in the act of, and in the water we drink. So that is one change that we thought was definitely warranted, and is more restrictive than the present bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Swenson.
Yes, this appears to be very comprehensive, so comprehensive as to be incomprehensible. I'm confused. I'm not sure how this applies to me, but I'm reading a few bits and pieces of this here and trying to follow this, and it seems to me that something that is this confusing is bound to be violated frequently, most likely inadvertently. Something, something just doesn't sound right about this. I look at 3.1.1, subparagraph four, it says, "Storage of any hazardous materials or waste overnight in delivery trucks or tank trailers requires a permit." I guess you can store them during the day, but you can't store them during the night. The next one says, "More than 50 gallons or 50 pounds," and so forth, "for retail sale." But if it's not for retail sale, then I don't need a permit? Is it only for retail sale? Can I store, you know? I think there's some, this is very confusing. I'd like to know how this applies to, you know, most of the people here, who aren't storing large quantities of hazardous waste or shipping it. I have a smoke detector that, that, you know, went pause up. They want to dispose of this thing. Can I put it in the dump? Am I discharging a hazardous waste? I changed the oil in my truck, in my car, and I got, well, about 10 quarts by the time you get finished, of used motor oil. Okay? How does this apply to disposal of that? Can I bring this to the landfill? Does it get burned? Can you explain some of these things, how this applies to, you know, our everyday activities?
Definitely.
In simple terms, please.
Okay. The confusing overnight storage is from the original bylaw, that you pointed out. The disposable, disposal of motor oil from your car can be made at the transfer station in the tank there, so that the town can use it, and it's, they have a facility, so they actually burn the heating oil to generate heat in town. So there are accepted ways of getting rid of the oil from your car and so forth. In addition, the people who sell you the oil in the state, in the Commonwealth, I'm about to go off the deep end here, I think are required to take it back as well. Okay, so there are ways. And the original definition, I said, the 24-hour definition is from the original bylaw.
Mrs. Segoff.
Charlotte Segoff, Main Street. I would like to urge this town meeting to accept the, this bylaw change and improvement. The Board of Health, when I was on it, and since then, has struggled and worked extremely hard to improve the hazardous waste. I'm very tired, and it's late, and I haven't felt well all day, but I want to, I want to say that we need as stringent bylaws as we can get. More and more toxics are being produced by industry and all the time. We have to take care of ourselves, and if we don't do it by ourselves, it's not going to get done. And there will be more, and nobody will pay any attention, except us. And if our Board of Health is willing to go to all of this trouble, we need to accept their recommendations. They haven't thought about them only overnight, they've been doing it for years. If you don't, if you find that you cannot live with a portion of this bylaw, you can come to the next town meeting and bring a citizen's petition in to have it changed, or you can go to the Board of Health and ask them to do it for you. It's not as if there isn't a way to make a change, that this is set in stone forever. We keep changing it, we keep improving it, and I think that that's what, we should leave it now, as it's been worked out, and see how it, see how it feels to live with it for a while. And then, if you find it impossible, then you can make some changes. So I urge you to vote, to vote yes.
We've, we've debated this now for quite some time. I would ask you to refrain from any further comment, unless you have something new to add. If you have something new to add, I'd be delighted to call on you. Gentleman at the back.
Thank you. My name is Greg Hutchins. I'm one of the trustees at Parker Village on Parker Street, and I guess my question is just really asked out of ignorance, but I suspect I'm not alone in my ignorance. I know that our development and our septic system is pretty close to 20 years old, if not 20 years old now, and I'm sure we're not alone in that. And I'm, we have worked extensively with Mr. Hallie over recent years to set up pumping schedules and install observation decks, or whatever they're called, for our system. And I'm wondering if this bylaw is going to have some sort of direct effect on us and on the other condominium developments in town? Is this going to force us to have additional tests done on the systems or to replace them?
Are you referring to septic systems?
Yes.
No, it is not going to do that.
Thank you.
Gentleman at the front.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move to previous question.
Do a second. All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Debate is cut off. We will now vote on the motion as amended under Article 16. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no.
All no.
Motion is carried.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn this town meeting until 7:30 PM tomorrow, April 2nd, 1991, in this auditorium.
Do I hear a second? I hear a second, all in favor of adjourning till tomorrow night, 7:30, say aye.
Aye.
All say no, the meeting's adjourned. Meeting is called to water?
Yes.
I think, it's not going to a third night. It's not going to a third night, I've got Bruins tickets for tomorrow night, so there's no possibility of a third night. Two announcements before we get started. I believe a lady named Jean Shark lost her pocketbook purse here last night, and if anyone has found it, it belongs to Jean Shark. You probably could ask Connie, I think Connie knows her and can tell you where to find her.
Did you find her purse?
Are we going to make an announcement about your purse here?
Yes, I thought you found your purse.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I just said that you had lost it. I am terribly sorry. I'm terribly sorry.
Was that what you were saying, we didn't turn the light on?
It's not April Fools anymore, that's not nice, Mr. Aguirre. Do we have an announcement of someone who is sitting here and has joined us tonight, do I?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, we'd like to introduce the town managers. A student intern who's with us tonight, Jeffrey. It all goes to show, we'll do anything to try and balk out the attendants. Happy to have you with us.
Let's see, last night, we finished up on Article 16, is that right, Connie? And we start up on Article 17?
Yes.
I believe it's right. I believe Article 17, dealing with the street acceptance for Stony Mead Road, is to take no action. Is that right, Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
I will move, make the motion, Mr. Weeks moves, that we take no action under Article 17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Weeks.
Since the layout of this road has not been accepted, we cannot accept it as a street, so therefore, we move that no action be taken.
Any other comment from the Finance Committee? I don't see any. I see no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of taking no action under Article 17, say aye.
Aye.
All say no, the motion carries unanimously. Article 18, I think, Article 18, dealing, dealing with consistency of special permits and variances with the master plan. Mr. DeFrain moves that this article, 18, be taken up in its numerical order at the adjourned session of the annual town meeting on June 4th, 1991. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. DeFrain.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The reason the Planning Council has asked to defer this article, there's really two reasons for that. One, the Planning Council had expected that it would receive the text of the finished master plan before this town meeting, and in fact, we did, but it was only a couple of days ago. So in fairness to the committees that will be administering this article, if you should choose to pass it in the future, we'd like them to have an opportunity to review the final plan. Also, we received some comments from some of the boards that would administer the finding included in Article 18, and we'd like to have an adequate chance to review those and respond to them.
Any comment on the article from either board?
We support this moving it to June 4th.
Good. Finance Committee, fine. Mr. Fingerman, do you have a comment on taking no action?
Just a question, is it the intent of the Selectmen and the Planning Council to bring the master plan before the town meeting for acceptance?
The entire master plan?
Yes, that's what was promised when we voted it, to spend money on several occasions in the '87, '88, '89 appropriations.
Do you want to answer that? I'll let Ann Santin, the chairman of the Planning Council, answer that, if you would.
Normally, I do that sort of stuff, but that's all right, go right ahead. I'm not sharing my money, though, with you, but...
As Mr. Fingerman knows, because we've discussed this, and this also been announced a couple of times in the Beacon, the Planning Council and the Selectmen have discussed this at least twice since last April, at the Selectmen's meeting, and have decided that there isn't any realistic way to bring a 500-page document to town meeting. I think in part, that is due to the low number of individuals who've read the entire draft, but that in each case, in order to implement the document, section by section, it will be brought to town meeting, just as the goals and objectives and the majority of the first part, the final piece being the signed bylaw, have already been brought to town meeting. For legal purposes, a master plan must be approved by a planning board, and in the case of Acton, by the Selectmen, which is what we expect to be done.
Any other comment under taking no action? All right. Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of taking no action at this time under Article 18, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, motion carries. Article 19, we passed by consent, I believe. 20, we passed by consent. 21, we passed by consent. 22, we passed by consent. I believe that that brings us to Article 23, which is the sign and advertise...
Planning Council proposes to allow businesses, under certain circumstances, to have both an exterior sign and a freestanding sign, where the, whereas the present bylaw would only allow one or the other. The Council also proposes to reduce the height and area presently allowed for freestanding signs, as well as allowing freestanding signs in the village districts, provided that a 30-foot building sit, setback, and other restrictions are satisfied. Planning Council proposes to change the special permit granting authority from the Board of Selectmen to the Planning Board, and add certain guidelines and restrictions to the special permits. Planning Council proposes to include off-premise directional signs and business special event signs, both with tight restrictions, to assist consumers in locating a business, and for advertising sales, grand openings, and the like. The Planning Council proposes that legally erected non-conforming signs be allowed to That's the basic outline of Article 23. In order to present a thorough and thoughtful article on signs and advertising devices, the Planning Council debated issues over the course of several months, solicited and received input from various towns' board committee, committees, and departments, participated in a public hearing, and held discussions with Acton's Chamber of Commerce. Planning Council incorporated many of these issues and concerns raised through these forums into Article 23. This article encourages signs and advertising devices that are well-designed, proportioned, and located so as not to infringe on the resident's sense of space and environment, while providing business with the freedom needed to advertise their goods and services. Therefore, the Planning Council asks for your support and to vote in favor of Article 23.
Comment from the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Weeks?
The Board of Selectmen support this article.
And from the Finance Committee, Mr. Moore?
The Fin, uh, Finance Committee supports the article.
And from the audience, yes, gentleman at the back.
Uh, if this article does nothing more than for the sign bylaw, it certainly fills up 20 pages of the warrant. Uh, going back some eight or 10 years, I went to Selectmen's meeting and complained that we have an awful lot of bylaws in this town and an awful lot of violations. And just as an example, I picked out the sign bylaw, and I aggravated them to the point that they finally decided that maybe they should form a, a sign committee. And straight at me, they decided that I was the one that brought it up, perhaps I'd like to be on the committee, which I accepted. We had a committee, and, well, actually, before I, they came with a committee, I brought in, I took the sign bylaw as a, an example. I brought into the Selectmen a list of 40 signs which were in violation of the illumination. 30 minutes before opening, 30 minutes after closing, all signs would be off. At 11:30 at night, I went through the town, and I brought in a list of at least 40 signs in violation. This is when they decided they'd form a committee. We formed a committee, we hashed it over back and forth, and at this time, I think it was the building commissioner, uh, was to make the decision on what this, what we came up with. We went out, came back with another list of 40-odd signs in violation. But the final outcome of the whole works was, we can't do anything about the violations, because the only way we can make them, uh, take care of, of their sign violations, is to take them to court, and the town doesn't have any money. Now, this was eight or 10 years ago. And if we didn't have money then, and I'm certainly sure we don't have money now, and we've got 20 pages here of sign bylaws, and it's not only the illumination that's in violation, there's many other violations, and not only with the sign bylaws, with other violations. So, I can't see why, and this, this illumination was in it eight or 10 years ago. In fact, a good part of it, three quarters of this, has been in, in force for the last 10 years. And they're still in violation. Signs that were supposed to be taken down after a business is out of business, we have them on great roads, we have them all over, signs are moved, signs are put up. Somewhere, I believe I read at one time, the signs are supposed to have a license number on every sign. I defy anybody to go out and find a sign, a number on any sign in this town. So, to me, we don't have the personnel to enforce the bylaws. Why come up with something this great? It's about 20 years too late to start with, because whatever signs are up now, you wouldn't notice the difference in the town, anyway. So, I say, we just either cut this thing down, or make up a mind that we're gonna enforce the bylaws that we have in the town.
Gentleman at the back?
Martin Gretz, Sto Street. Um, yeah, that, uh, 20 pages, uh, seems like kinda overkill, especially when you consider that's twice as much bylaw as we needed to handle the hazardous materials, uh, controlled. Um, I don't know. Almost don't know where to start. Uh, I can't be the only one who's edgy about trying to legislate aesthetics. And I would say at least half of this bylaw, and probably a little bit more, uh, does nothing more than that. Uh, there are some good bits in here, uh, controlling, uh, things like beacons and, and uh, safety hazards, placement, size, that sort of thing. Um, but an awful lot of this reads as all written by a control freak, um, which, if you don't know, is someone who dedicates his or her life to seeing that every mysterious word is firmly defined, and anything that moves is nailed down, and that nobody has even the appearance of trying to get away with something. Um, so, anyway, let me just, I'm not gonna go through this whole thing, for goodness sakes, no. But, uh, to show you what, the kinds of things that bother me, let's start at the beginning. Uh, 7.1, points four and five are mutually contradictory. You can't accomplish number five unless number four becomes so much wind. I mean, it sounds nice, but, uh, it doesn't work. I, in this list of things that are being controlled, take a look at 7.3.6. Now, there's some good things stuck into this laundry list, uh, revolving beacons, searchlight, animations, spinners, that sort of thing. But there's a lot of other stuff here, that, uh, if you eliminated them, you'd take away a lot of the fun of, uh, putting a sign up in the first place. Next page, what, uh, who decided on three different colors? Why not two? Why four? And who decides what, uh, what's a different color? You put this down, and somebody who has a rainbow for their logo wouldn't be able to use it. And, uh, that includes people like paint stores, graphics, artist supplies places, uh, any number of things. Uh, if I wanted to put up a sign that had a spectrum, a continuous spectrum, uh, you'd have the planning board or the zoning board sitting around for weeks trying to figure out where the colors started and stopped. Um, or two different type styles. I mean, what, come on. You mean, I can't, uh, sell graphic supplies and use a different type style for each letter in the word "graphics" just to show off? Or I can't put in more than one product to give you an example of all the different things that I can sell you in a, in a retail store? Uh, I mean, this goes on and on. And I can't see why you have to do that in a bylaw. And there's at some point at which we have to trust people, and sometimes, they do exhibit what we would call bad taste, but tastes change. And if we nail down the tastes that we have right now, 10 years from now, when we like something that we don't like now, uh, comes along, uh, then people are gonna be very unhappy. I think that, in the case of signs, just as in the case of architectural details and other artifacts, bridges, for example, the best thing to do is to pare it down to the minimum that you need to keep some semblance of control over the safety and the proliferation of aspects. Let the aesthetics, relax with the aesthetics. Let them go. Let, let people continue to live. Don't try to embalm the place. Some of the things are going to offend you. Well, that's just because people are putting them up. You're dealing with people. That's pretty much what we have to deal with here, and I can't see any way around it. Uh, I recommend, rather than trying to patch this up now, that we put it aside, and have you go back to the drawing board, cut it down to about a third of its present size, and then bring it back, and let us have a look at it.
Mr. Weeks?
Uh, yes. First of all, I'd like to mention that... ... regards to enforcement, uh, building commission does a pretty good job enforcing it. He might not get, uh, every violation, 'cause there's just so many, uh, properties in town, but I know he, he got at least one. I didn't even know I was in violation, but I found out very quickly, and, uh, you know, I had to come into compliance. I've looked at the old bylaw very closely, and I've looked at this one very closely. I have a business which is very dependent upon signage, probably more than any other business in this town. Um, boy, I'd love to have a bylaw that will let me really put the signs up that I want. Love it, from a business standpoint. But, as a member of this community, this is a good bylaw, and I support it, even though it hurts me from a business standpoint. If that makes sense to you, sometimes it doesn't make sense to me, but we'll go from there. The reason why this is lengthy is because you have village districts in this town, which had specific conditions put to them. This bylaw addresses those specific conditions. They take them separately from other areas. We don't have just a uniform town, like some other places do. We have a group of smaller towns, villages, in a greater community. What this bylaw does is try to address the businesses in each area. The business community was involved in this. While it doesn't meet everyone's wishes, this is a fast, greater step forward to helping the businesses get the signage they need, at the same time, keeping it reasonable, so you're not in complaining about the gathered signs, which also start appearing, as they have in some other communities. This is a good bylaw. It is enforceable. There will always be someone who breaks the rules. That's why you have rules. Okay? But if you, if you don't have something like this, you will have no control. And by the way, strictly as a business owner, I found in the previous, by really studying the previous, uh, bylaw, five loopholes that I could make, and every person in this town, every business owner in this town, can make their property look hellish, and you would not want that to happen. This tightens up those loopholes. Thank you.
I'd like to make an announcement here. The owner of a blue VW Massachusetts 740 JJM, your lights are on. Blue VW, 740 JJM. I'll recognize Mr. Swenson and then Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I'll start off by saying, I guess this is something that's probably long overdue, but I did have some questions on it. Uh, as the previous gentleman questioned, the, the limitation of the maximum of two different type styles in 7.4.1.4, I can't quite, uh, understand the rationale of that. But of a greater concern to me is in 7.4.3.3, which states, uh, with regard to illumination, that it shall be practically invisible to the casual, passive, or outside of the lot. And I'm not sure what practically invisible is. Either you can see it, or you can't see it. Uh, and I'd like the clarification on that term. And I have another question on 7.11, on non-conforming signs, and the question is, I guess, is, uh, as I read this, "A non-conforming sign may remain, however, if it is replaced, it must be replaced with one which complies with these regulations." Is that correct? And I'm not sure why we're, you know, even allowing a non-conforming, uh, sign. It must have conformed to the previous, uh, conditions. So, a little more explanation in that area, please.
Yes, go ahead, sir. Crockett.
Uh, on your first question, uh, regarding, uh, type style, uh, the, the intent was just simply to, to, to keep signs a, as simple as, uh, possible, and, and still allow, uh, businesses, uh, et cetera, to, to display their message. Uh, that's, that was the, the basic, down-and-dirty philosophy for limiting the number of type style. Uh, your second question regarding, uh, illumination, uh, what does, uh, practically invisible, I suppose, hmm, just, it just sort of implies that the, the light source needs to be, uh, landscaped or shaded, so that, uh, passersby and, and automobiles, or even pedestrians, uh, aren't, uh, uh, that their vision isn't impaired by the, by the light source, so that the glare from the light source, uh, is illuminated, but that obviously, the, you know, you can still, uh, see the light coming through. And your last question was regarding non-conforming signs, and I, I wasn't exactly sure I understood, uh, your, your question. Uh, if, if, uh, and if an existing sign is removed, uh, and replaced, then the new sign would have to conform to Article 23, assuming, uh, it's approved. Uh, does that answer your question? I wasn't...
Um, not entirely. 7.11.1 says, notwithstanding Section 7.5, the repainting of a non-conforming... I did have some questions on it. As the previous gentleman questioned, the limitation of the maximum of two different type styles in 7.4.1.4, I can't quite understand the rationale of that. But of a greater concern to me is in 7.4.3.3, which states with regard to illumination, that it shall be practically invisible to the casual passersby or outside the lot. And I'm not sure what practically invisible is. Either you can see it, or you can't see it. And I'd like the clarification on that term. And I have another question on 7.11, on non-conforming signs, and the question is, I guess, is, as I read this, "A non-conforming sign may remain, however, if it is replaced, it must be replaced with one which complies with these regulations." Is that correct? And I'm not sure why we're, you know, even allowing the non-conforming sign. It must have conformed to the previous conditions. So, a little more explanation in that area, please.
Yes, go ahead, sir. Crockett.
On your first question regarding type style, the intent was just simply to keep signs as simple as possible and still allow businesses, et cetera, to display their message. That was the basic, down and dirty philosophy for limiting the number of type style. Your second question regarding illumination, what does practically invisible, I suppose, just sort of implies that the light source needs to be landscaped or shaded so that passersby in automobiles or even pedestrians aren't, their vision isn't impaired by the light source, so that the glare from the light source is illuminated, but that obviously the, you know, you can still see the light coming through. And your last question was regarding non-conforming signs, and I wasn't exactly sure I understood your question. If an existing sign is removed and replaced, then the new sign would have to conform to Article 23, assuming it's approved. Does that answer your question? I wasn't.
Not entirely. 7.11.1 says, notwithstanding Section 75, the repainting of a non-conforming in different colors should not constitute erecting a sign, but I believe there's something that limits the number of colors you can have on a sign.
Yeah, three. So, if an existing sign was repainted, but if it was painted in, you know, if you wanted to take an existing non-conforming sign and paint it in four new different colors, then that wouldn't be allowed into this bylaw. But if you wanted to repaint it under, with three new colors, then you'd be all set. Is that, is that a vote?
As I say, something like this is long overdue, but it's a bit confusing.
But if you wanted to do different colors?
Mr. Hunter.
Right. Mr. Moderator, I would urge the meeting to approve this bylaw. The town has had very considerable experience in sign regulation, and it's in part because of that experience that has lengthened the bylaw, because it tries to deal with a number of different variables. It's an easy tactic, unfortunately, when you have any bylaw which by its nature is lengthy, to come in, poke at one or two sections, and stand up and say, "This isn't very well thought out, and we ought to vote it down," particularly if you haven't been involved in the process of constructing it. The signage in town has a very significant impact on the ambivalence of life in town. As it happened, where we have our vacation house up in the Adirondacks, some years ago, that area took a very laissez-faire attitude towards signage, and it became something like, as far as signs were concerned, something like Route 9 in Framingham. And when they decided to try and get this under control and put it back into a mode that was more compatible with the woods and trees and so forth, it took 20 years, because you had to deal with all these non-conforming signs. But, you know, business didn't dry up, it didn't go away, and what we found was that businesses are competing, and if all businesses are playing on the same playing field, and the signage allowed is reasonable, then everybody gets along with it. If you want an example of laissez-faire run rampant, go to Houston. I mean, they have huge signs on towers, and they have tremendous things one way and another, and it's a blight on the landscape. And one of the things the selectmen have heard, or at least I've heard as a selectman over the years that I've been on the board, is that we want to keep the signage looking decent in town. And frankly, first off, I'm not at all unhappy about having signs go to the planning board, because then I won't get that static anymore. But having worked with the existing sign bylaw, it is not as workable as it should be. And one of the aspects, in addition to aesthetics, that we try to think about and is required actually under the existing bylaw language, is the safety of the motor in public. And indeed, if you have a profusion of signs, if they're difficult to read quickly, if they're not positioned properly, or too many, et cetera, et cetera, you indeed have some problems with people that are unfamiliar with the town or driving in the road, trying to read a ladder sign and figure out where they're going to go. So, that's another consideration. I think probably everybody in this room could find one or more lines in this particular bylaw that they might not agree with. But I would submit to you that on the whole, this is a very well-balanced and well-thought-out advancement of our current regulation of signs, and I would urge you all to approve it. Thank you.
Mr. Bursaw.
And now I'll go turn my lights out. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Bursaw, 23 Newtown Road. I'm quite amazed here that the opinion is without a sign bylaw, we can't survive. You know, I'm proud of our youth, we've been surviving for 200 years without it. I don't think this town has done too badly. Think it looks pretty nice. We're all up signed by law. I think putting more teeth in at this time is wrong. We don't need it, we should do away without it.
Okay, so no one's standing, we will vote. This takes two-thirds to pass. All in favor of the motion is read, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
It is not unanimous, I'm going to count the vote. Would all opposed, please stand. Would all opposed, all opposed, please stand. I count seventeen people opposed. Would all in favor, please stand. I count seventy-nine people in favor. I declare that the motion has carried. Let's see, Article 24, we passed by consent. Twenty-five, we passed by consent. Twenty-six, we passed by consent. And twenty-seven, we passed by consent. We're now at Article 28, dealing with enhanced 911 service. Mr. Gilberti moves to the town accept Chapter 291 of the Acts of 1990. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Gilberti.
Instead of going into a presentation, could I ask those people that asked for this to be held, please raise their questions, and we might try to answer them?
It would appear that the person is not here or the persons are not here, so why don't you go into your normal brilliant but short presentation? Well, because he can if he wishes. If he doesn't wish, it can be very short.
Good evening, I urge you to support this article on the enhanced 911. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the Board of Selectmen of the Finance Committee? Mr. Swenson is going to stand up, and I know he's going to ask, "What is this?" But I won't put words in your mouth. Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, save me asking, "What is this?" And the question is, how much is it going to cost? May not be free today, but, you know, next year or the year after, when somebody in there in Beacon Hill in their infinitesimal wisdom pulls the funding for this sort of a thing. It sounds to me like this is just going to create a lot of confusion. What do we need this for?
I'm not asking to step down because I've got a conflict of interest again in this, but go right ahead.
Whether we accept this legislation and put the enhanced 911 into the community in the town of Acton, which the Board of Selectmen feels is in the best interest of the community, you are going to be paying for it because the telephone company and the legislature have worked out an arrangement that I believe starting in June, you will be paying for your directory assistance calls, that money, a portion of it, will be set aside for the enhanced 911 system that will be offered to all of the communities that accept it. So, one way or another, we're going to be paying for it. At this point, we do not believe that it's going to cost the town anything in the installation, and at any point in the process, we can withdraw or we feel that it's going to impact the town monetarily in any way. I would urge you to support it. I think it's in the best interest of our safety in this community.
All right. No one else is standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 28 is read, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Article 29 was passed by consent. Article 30, we will now take up, dealing with directing the selectmen to replace the ambulance. Mr. Ormsby moves to direct the Board of Selectmen to immediately replace the town's aged and unreliable ambulance. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Ormsby, you have the right to speak to your motion if you wish.
Mr. Moderator, Jack Ormsby, 7 Spring Hill Road. This article and the one that follows it grew out of a citizens' movement to preserve the high quality and low cost of our ambulance service by keeping it in the capable hands of Acton's firefighters. I'm honored to be the spokesman for that movement here tonight, and I'm proud and happy to report that the movement wanted warm and widespread support from our townspeople, enabling us to achieve everything that we set out to do. All we now need is a final and firm public commitment that the town's aged and ailing ambulance will in fact be replaced. As the selectmen's recommendation acknowledges, we thought that we had such a commitment at last year's annual town meeting, but we soon learned that there is many a slip towards the cup and the lip when it comes to keeping such promises. Instead of being released when it was decided not to privatize the ambulance service, the funds to replace the ambulance were held for possible use in funding potential litigation in a selectmen's dispute with the firefighters' union. Now, we ask the selectmen to assure us again, while crossing their hearts and not their fingers, that our frail elderly ambulance will in fact be replaced come hell or high water.
Mr. Gilberti.
Good evening again. According to the wishes of last year's town meeting, the town manager has gone out to bid for a replacement ambulance for the town of Acton. Those bids have been received, and after careful review, we have contracted with Wheel Coach of North Andover for the replacement of our present ambulance, at a total bid price of $54,472 with trade. This is within the appropriated amount voted at the 1990 town meeting for this purpose. We are presently awaiting delivery. The Board of Selectmen feels that the subject is moot. We urge you not to support this article. Thank you.
Mr. Gilberti, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Ormsby.
May I ask Mr. Gilberti to say on behalf of the selectmen that the ambulance will be replaced now, no matter what fiscal circumstances arise, and no matter what other problems we may run into with the state zone?
We have contracted with Wheel Coach of North Andover for the replacement of our present ambulance at a total bid price of $54,472 with trade. We have entered into a contract with that company.
Thank you.
Any other comment on the motion under Article 30? All right, well, yes. Mrs. Olszewski.
Yes, Evelyn Olszewski, 77 Magog Hill Road. I have a question. What is the date of delivery?
I would defer to the town manager. We expect delivery within a month, 30 days.
All right, we will now vote, and the motion is read under Article 30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no?
No.
Motion is carried. I'm sorry, motion is denied. I'm sorry. April 4.
Thank you.
I take a 50 cent deduction on that for the night. Thank you. Article 31. Mr. Ormsby, do you still intend to move Article 31, given the status of Article 30?
Mr. Moderator, I fully recognize that these, both of these articles can be considered moot at this point, but this has been a long, hard fight, and the people who made it do not want to withdraw the articles until we've made a couple of points which we think are important.
Fine, I'll read Article, the motion under Article 31. Mr. Ormsby moves to direct the Board of Selectmen to discontinue consideration of privatizing the town's ambulance service and continue to provide this service by using Acton firefighters/ EMTs. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Ormsby.
Mr. Moderator, we were gratified when the selectmen accepted our contention that privatization of the ambulance service was a mistake, and we are pleased with their pledge not to pursue it further this year. We also want to reassure the selectmen that no matter how the article reads, we have no illusions about being able to rule out of bounds any future studies that they may want to make. We fully recognize that theirs is the power and the glory when it comes to calling boundaries. On a merrier note, I must confess that our reaction to the last sentence of the selectmen's recommendation on this article is somewhat irreverent, perhaps even obstreperous. I refer to the sentence that questions whether it is proper for town meeting members to tell the Board of Selectmen what to do. You can take it from us, Mr. Moderator, it may not be proper, but it sure feels good.
I'll recognize Mr. Gilberti.
One of the main responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen is to make recommendations to you, the town meeting, on all current and proposed town programs, and the ways that we recommend how we should properly fund these programs. A motion such as this would prohibit the Board of Selectmen from even looking at this program in the future, to see how it fits into our overall program goals and funding recommendations, which we must make. The Board of Selectmen feel that this would handicap us in properly carrying out our duties. As we have stated in the summary, we are not at this time looking at privatizing the Acton ambulance service, but in the future, we must be allowed to look at each and every program that we provide as a service to the town. We must be allowed to evaluate and make proper recommendations to you. We do not support this article, and we would urge you to defeat it. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter.
I'll confess to being the author of the sentence that Mr. Ormsby dislikes. The operative word is "consider" not "do," and frankly, it's my feeling that the meeting cannot bind the selectmen as to what it may or may not consider in the future and bring back to the town meaning for action. You may not agree to do it, but it seems to me that in discharge of our duties as selectmen, we ought to be able to, and are able to, consider most everything that seems appropriate. This is not an entirely moot article. This is an extension of collective bargaining, or at least potentially so here tonight. There is some discussion, and has been for some period of time, between the fire union and the town management as to who is required to be an EMT and who is not required to be an EMT in the fire department. I'm not going to rehearse the various positions, but suffice it to say that there's some meeting of the minds that only the junior firemen, only the most recently hired, are required to be EMTs. And as you know, one of the things that we were looking at this year, if the override hadn't been passed, regrettably, in the B budget presentation, and hopefully we don't have to go back to that, but was a reduction of a substantial number of firemen. There is a possibility I may be seeing things in the corners that don't exist, but as a lawyer, I try to always think of all the alternatives, or at least the best I can. And one of the alternatives that occurs to me would be a strong vote of this meeting that we should never consider privatization of the ambulance, combined combined with a position by the fire union that only the junior firemen needed to be EMTs, and therefore putting us in a position where, at least, it would be argued that we could not lay any firemen off because we couldn't discontinue a private ambulance service, and we couldn't run it without EMTs, and nobody else was required to be an EMT. So there are wheels and wheels here. We are not currently considering privatizing the ambulance. I understand from the group that came in and discussed this with us several months ago that this was the third or fourth time in the town's history of ambulance service that it has been considered. And I wouldn't be too surprised, since history tends to repeat itself, that it may be considered or studied sometime in the future. But I would urge you not to approve this article because it may have implications in the immediate future having nothing to do with the private ambulance service. Thank you.
Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator. Am I on? Okay. I agree with Mr. Hunter. I don't think we should pass an article prohibiting the Selectmen to consider something. Considering it is just that, considering it. On the face of it, doesn't prove very much, but I think it's a bad idea. However, I think this article is an illustration of a situation which has been occurring over the last few years, which is that the Selectmen are taking over more and more of the budget process. And since we defer the budget to June, this is not the time to get into it deeply. But think about it, between now and June, we will be back to the bottom-line town budget debate, which says, "Town meeting vote a total amount of money. Let the Selectmen spend it any way they want to." That process will lead to this kind of problem. So although I'm opposed to this article, I think it's an illustration of the problems to come. If we allow the town meeting to be talked into giving the Selectmen complete power over the entire municipal budget.
Yes, Dr. Donald.
Mr. Moderator, have you been ignoring the Finance Committee on these last two articles?
Evidently, I was, but I didn't mean to.
We have no, we have no recommendation on the previous article, and on this article, we do not recommend it. Thank you.
Been appropriately chastened. Make it soil age. It's got to be that. Any other comment on Article thirty-one? Seeing nobody standing, we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article thirty-one? Say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion is lost.
Thank you.
Article thirty-two. Mrs. Segoff moves that the town adopt the resolution as set forth in the warrant. Mrs. Segoff. Let me ask you a question, Mrs. Segoff. Are you going to make an amendment to the?
Yes.
All right.
She's already short.
All right, I'll tell you what we're going to do. Mrs. Segoff is going to make an amendment to this resolution because she wants it worded differently. I would suggest we make note of the amendment, and we pass it without discussion. And then we can discuss the amended resolution. Mrs. Segoff, why don't you amend the resolution as you see fit?
And do that now?
Yes.
Thank you. On line three of the first paragraph, which starts, "Whereas bio remediation," I want to put in, "but has not been considered for use at this site." I want to specify the particular site, the W.R. Grace site.
I'm sorry, would you start that over again? Because I don't have a copy of the amendment.
All right.
And is this in the?
I will say it, and I will stop at that little insertion.
Okay.
"Whereas bio remediation is a process that has been used successfully for this purpose at over a hundred Superfund sites around the nation, but has not been considered for use at this site by either W.R. Grace or the New England Division of EPA." And so it's "at this site."
You're adding "at this site" as the first part of the amendment?
Yeah.
All right.
"Whereas a simple, inexpensive, bench-scale pilot study can be performed on the contaminated materials from the change would be, the amendment would be, four lagoons to be cleansed at the W.R. Grace site." So the amendment would be four lagoons, not one. In order to?
Excuse me, you'd remove the words "one of the"
Yes.
And substitute the word "four."
Four lagoons.
Okay. Are there any other amendments?
And yes, I would like, down at the bottom, it says, "Directed to" four organizations. The EPA, we want them to know what we're doing. That's the District One Boston that I'm talking about, W.R. Grace Company, the Boston Globe, and the U.S. EPA in Washington. And I also would like this, I want to change, add the the place that we have to send it to, that the Water District has to send this to, which is the Bureau of Accounts. Because this, this resolution depends on approval.
I'm sorry, we're only going to get the amendment now. So you've made three changes to this.
That's right.
You've added "at this site." You've added the word "four," deleting the words "one of the."
Amendment.
And you've added Bureau of Accounts as a place to send it.
Yes, and it's a little bit longer, but if I may just add that.
Can you define Bureau of Accounts as to where that is?
Yes, it's the State Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, the State Bureau of Accounts, or the Attorney General, is the way it's written in the original resolution.
I'm sorry.
I'm not making?
No, but you're making yourself clear. I'm just a little slow writing here.
Oh.
You've got, read off again.
Can I give it to you?
Yes. The way this reads, Mrs. Segoff, is this action to be subject to a favorable ruling by the State Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, the State Bureau of Accounts, or the Attorney General. That, to me, sounds like three places.
No, it's two. The State Department of Revenue Bureau of Accounts is one place.
The State Department of Revenue dash Division of Local Services, the State Bureau of Accounts is one place.
One place.
So you want that plus the Attorney General.
Well, I don't particularly care one way or the other about the Attorney General.
Well, the guy who wanted the jobs. Not here tonight, is he? No, he's gone. He didn't get it anyway, but he tried hard. Do you want, you'll have to tell me whether you want the Attorney General.
Okay, might as well. It really doesn't matter because it's that State Bureau of Accounts that matters.
It matters a great deal to me. I want this to be right.
Okay, then I, then I accept.
Don't accept it from me. I'm not, I'm asking you.
I'm just trying to make less, I'm just trying to make less work.
Do you want the Attorney General in there?
Yes.
Okay. Nope, she wanted the Attorney General in there. Mostly, I've always pointed him out, to tell you the truth. All right, those are the amendments. Do I hear a second to Mrs. Segoff's amendments? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Amendment is carried. Now, you may speak to your amended resolution.
Okay. And do I have to read the resolution? No, all right, okay.
Oh, wait, wait, Mrs. Segoff. Floor is yours. You can do, don't listen to these people out there. You know, if we had a representative town meeting, this wouldn't be happening. You may read the resolution, or you may speak to it. You may do whatever you like.
I will just speak to it. Save your time. I feel that explanations are necessary because of questions that were asked at the Water District meeting, and because, in our, in our discussion, and because of the accounts that were in the beacon that seem to me did not quite understand all of the points in the resolution. And so I want to explain some of it. And when I'm through, I hope the moderator will recognize, I hope the moderator will recognize Mr. Eisengrine, who can discuss with you the technical details. And I want to just discuss some of the history. Unless you have followed for the last twelve years all the, the whole maze of events that have occurred on this original contamination of the wells, it's very difficult to understand what's going on right now, the politics and the bureaucracy and the situation generally. First, about bio remediation. The field of biotechnology started some time ago, but the field of bio remediation, that is, using organisms like bacteria and fungi, to digest, would be a simple word, to digest the contaminants, the toxic contaminants in the earth, really started up slowly about three years ago. But very slowly, because that's the way most fields do start. There were very few experimental tests, and there were very few field tests. So that at the time that the Boston Region One EPA began its consideration with W.R. Grace and with the representatives of the town of Acton and the Water District, there was very little evidence for them to positively go by. And it just, it sort of was, it slid by. And at the time that, when the public hearing was held in September eight, nineteen eighty-nine, a year and a half ago, and we asked questions at great length and responded in a very lengthy evening meeting saying why we wanted bio remediation, the response that we got fourteen days later was no. And when they sent us the printed responsiveness summary, it was a sort of a gloss over. It was a refusal with no, no evidence, no explanation, no data on what they had read or what data they were using to make their decision by. It was a hurried job, which was of very little satisfaction. It was, we objected to completely. And so we have been following all the details very closely in the developing field of bio remediation of toxic materials. And with great joy, we learned that William Riley, the head of the EPA nationally, the director of the EPA, is extremely enthusiastic about the field of bio remediation. He has ordered that the field be studied extensively. He has set aside funds from the United States government for more such studies. The, he has set up a new division in the EPA called Superfund Innovative Technology Evaluation. And it's true, there are other divisions of this, there are sections of that, but one of the large ones is on bio remediation. We have, we are in touch with that group. They operate as a research team out of Cincinnati. We have attended, we have attended conferences. We are going to one in mid-April. We are on their mailing list. We have gotten many publications from them. We know about many conferences that they've had in the last year and a half, or two years. They had, there had been only one prior to that public hearing. Now, we could live, we could have accepted the decision that was made. But circular and super, and the Superfund Act says that we want the best possible permanent solution. And we feel that bio remediation will make the best possible permanent solution because what will happen, according to Grace's plan, they would take out of four lagoons, which now have the contamination. They would remove possibly down to eighty feet the contaminants which are stuffed in there, take them out, put them on the ground, and solidify them, immobilize them with cement. We don't feel that immobilization can possibly be permanent as we drive along the roads and the bridges. We know that the cement disintegrates. And when it disintegrates, in the, under the ground, there will be leakage. There will be leachate. We know too, we also don't want all that disturbance, all those, the molecules of volatile toxics to come into the air and into our neighborhoods. We would rather use bio remediation because the germs are put into the lagoons right there. Added to those germs are also nutrients, nitrogen, air, oxygen, water, so that the, so that these germs can have a delicious gourmet meal and instead of lunching slowly on the toxics that are there. And also, those nutrients have to be stirred constantly so that it goes deeper and deeper. The, when those bacteria die, as we all do, other bacteria will eat them up. And the whole, the whole mess will be turned into carbon dioxide and water. Grace has done the very same thing in Cambridge, on the Ale White property. They invited our consultant and Bob and me to come down to pridefully show us that this is what they had accomplished, that they could clean up what they had done down there at the Old Duane Almy site, where they couldn't build a subway properly without moving the whole plan over. They've cleaned that up, and they've begun to build a whole new setup of buildings, high-rise buildings. The state has founded a very successful system. And Mr. Russell Wilking, the vice president of Grace in charge of this site down here, was very gleeful about it. And when I talked with him personally, was willing, was willing to fund it until the New York lawyers told him not to, for whatever lawyers' reasons there are. And I will take Mr. Act's time to ask him now. In the, by now, it's a hundred thirty-five or a hundred fifty sites that have been used, in which bio remediation has been successfully used. And some of the complaints that have been made are that the bacteria that are used will not work on vinyl chloride, vanilla bean chloride, benzene, formaldehyde, toluene, or even metals, substances that are in our, the lagoons here in Acton. But that's not true. And that's why we want to test. We want to make sure that we can get the right combination of bacteria to eat what we have in these lagoons. And we are saying "four lagoons," but actually, we would like to be able to even try it on the blowdown pit, which is so, in which the contamination is so great, that the Grace Company was planning to take that away, dig it all up, take it away to some outside incinerator and burn it there. But we feel that we could save the money if they could just use bacteria and leave all of that stuff right in place to be eaten up by hungry bacteria. What we are asking for is ten thousand dollars, not from the town. We know you don't have, we don't have any money. have any money, but from the interest of the $2 million that Grace settled for with the Water District, or I might say, the Water District settled for with Grace, there's a lot of interest building up, and we're asking $10,000, and we will ask no more from, from any town or government, or local government source. The site group, the Innovative Technologies Group, has grants for field studies, and I think Mr. Eisenstein will give you those details. We're going to ask them, once we have this bench study, for the money to continue with the field studies. We're not sure that this is going to work here, but we want to try it. And we think that the money, that we, and all of us are water takers practically, we're all the same, we're just two separate governments, but we, and two separate pockets, and we take it out of one and put it in the other. So I would like for us to spend our money to test, to see if we can do this bioremediation. I'm not saying that we can, but we believe we can. Yes, my last point has to do with the difference in the behavior of EPA Region One Boston and the behavior of the National EPA, and I've mentioned that, I've mentioned that briefly already, but there is a difference. Each region of the country has its own offices and officials, and they make their own decisions. And of course, when you're an administrator, you know it's very difficult to go back on and to make your underlings, or your staff, or colleagues do, change something that they passed once before. It's embarrassing to everybody, and I think that, I feel that if we can get this going, we certainly, we have the support of Senator Kerry, Senator Kennedy, Chet Atkins, and I feel that if we get the support of this town meeting, that will help push this process along. Now, Bob Eisenstein, who's going to, who I hope may follow me, was a legislator, he lives here in Acton, he's married to a woman who lived here a long, long time, her kids used to play in the green colored and red and yellow stuff that used to ooze out at Grace, and they'd come home with burns on their arms. He was a legislator in New Hampshire before he moved here to Acton, and was on the Science and Technology Committee. He's a, has a B.S. and an M.S. in Engineering from MIT, so, and he's been studying this very, very thoroughly and intensively. Is it all right?
The gentleman is a registered voter in town? Yes. How long is your presentation, sir?
About three or four minutes.
Three or four minutes? Fine, go, go right ahead. No, I didn't certainly say that, I had no intention. I just don't want this gentleman to talk too long.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to make this very technical, but I think it's important that some points be clarified. We've been all waiting 13 years for a solution to the problem, and the recent articles in the Beacon have talked about many of the questions that have been raised as to whether bioremediation would really work. And I'd like to assure you, ensure Charlotte, that we wouldn't have approached this subject unless we had done our homework. And we feel that the technical proof is needed with a bioremediation test, this is the standard procedure that is used at any site. You do it on a small scale, and you prove that it can work, you get the right combination of microbes, and then the next step is you have a demonstration or a field test of the process. If, as the paper said, it was only 30% effective, we wouldn't have gone this far, we, we have evidence that it's, it's much, much better than that. The evidence is based on work that was done in Texas in 1987, at a Superfund site, which you very much like Acton in terms of the types of chemicals, the, as they say, the chlorinated hydrocarbons. And in this particular case, the EPA office, the local EPA office in Texas, had a much better vision of the problem. They gave the responsible party, in this case, ARCO, a choice. You can incinerate, or you can bioremediate, which is what they requested, if you can prove it works. And they did exactly what we talked about. ARCO, with their own funds, funded a bioremediation bench test of the very chemicals we're talking about, and in a matter of two to three months, proved that it was effective. As a consequence of this, they funded a demonstration project of about a third of an acre of lagoon, about 200, over 200,000 gallons of sludge and about a half a million gallons of water, which they did on a large scale, encountered the practical problems that you don't encounter in a laboratory. The result of this was that about seven months later, they proved the effectiveness, and some of the results were interesting. The, as they call them, the priority pollutants, in 112 days in this case, were reduced 90% from what they were originally. The concentration, for example, was 100 parts per million, it was down to 10 parts per million. In addition, in 130 days, the volume of sludge was reduced 90%. And you ask how this happens, and Charlotte inferred this, the microbes consume the toxica's food, and the byproduct is water, which will seep away, which will no longer be there, and carbon gases, which evaporate. So you have less than you started with. So we based our drive on this report, and we have not just lifted these facts out of a report, out of context, because the entire report was supervised by six experts in the field of science. One of them happened to be the head of the EPA's Office of Research and Development in Ada, Oklahoma. They had to review all of this data and approve it, and they did. And as a consequence, they're now going to bioremediate the entire 7.3 acres of this site. So we're not dreaming these things up, we're talking about real facts that are important. One of the other questions has arisen as to, you're going to delay the solution to this problem, when is it going to be finished? The bioremediation test will take two to three months. Basically, they, they get samples and they treat them as they did in this other study. Up to now, the primary work that Grace has spent money for is to show where the contaminants are, how many they are, how we're going to handle them. So this work would have had to have been done, whether we talked about bioremediation or not. This was a preface to their own solution. Their solution is to excavate the sludge and solidify it, as Charlotte said. We're saying, if you're going to excavate it, treat it in a bioremediation process, and clean it up, and make it permanent, don't bury it in the ground again. There's been some talk about cost. The project in Texas was estimated to cost about $42 million. This was complete processing, monitoring, building, construction, engineering. However, they're handling about three times as much waste as we are, so proportionally, it might be about $15 million. We think that this is still a good expenditure for the fact that we're getting a solution which is going to be forever, so to speak. And the, one of the potential savings would be on this very highly toxic blowdown pit we speak about. They had the same levels of concentration in Texas, and they were able to bioremediate this, it's something like 3,000 or 4,000 parts per million. So we're asking for your support of this resolution, to send a strong message to the EPA and to Grace, that we think this is a very reasonable request, and that they should consider it. It is kind of difficult to reverse a decision once you've been made, made it, but we think that the evidence is pretty strong in favor of this, so we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Mr. Rehern. Mr. Moderator, we heard Grace mentioned as an addressee in the U.S. EPA, and the Attorney General, and the Boston Globe. We also heard that there was some history of perhaps not completely accurate reporting in the Beacon. I submit that this resolution requires some media remediation, and would move to amend it to end the Beacon as an addressee.
Do I hear a second to the amendment? Yes, you may, you can speak to the amendment, absolutely, Mrs. Seigah. Yes, now you can do it right now, because we're no longer discussing anything but the amendment.
The, I did not say that the media, that the Beacon misrepresented. I mean, I've, I've forgotten your words, Brian Dennis. I would rather not add the Beacon, because the Beacon is here, there's no question but that they're hearing this conversation, this discussion, they're always, they've come everywhere, and they do good reporting jobs. I feel, though, that the, the spread and the different points of view that emerged in last week's article were not the way I wanted them to be. Not necessarily that they were incorrect, but that they weren't as complete, and as full, and as explanatory as I wanted them to be, so I don't want any criticism of the Beacon.
If there's any more comment on whether we ought to send it to the Beacon or not, I'd like to get that now, and I wouldn't like to spend a lot of time on it. Anybody else want to speak to Mr. Rehern's amendment? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote on the amendment, which was to add the Beacon to this list. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Opposed, say nay. The amendment is lost. Now we're back, I think Mr. Katie's turn.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, I'm sorry. We want, we want to get the boards to speak on this as well? All right, fine. It's not Mr. Katie's turn, it's Mrs. Tavernier's turn.
It's just that it's my only chance to speak, this entire town meeting.
You shall have it.
Thank you. The Acton Board of Selectmen supports ACES's efforts to raise money in order to fund this pilot laboratory study to test bioremediation, specifically on the contaminants that are found in the room. In September of 1990, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to urge EPA to consider just such a study, and as you've heard, it was subsequently denied by EPA. The Selectmen are supportive of ACES's desire to protect the environment, and we believe that it is possible bioremediation could be an effective, long-term solution, and it could be a means of dealing with the residual contaminants that will be left in the lagoon after most of the material has been excavated. We also believe that bioremediation might be an appropriate alternative to be used in the contingency plan, using five-year review periods in the event the current approved solution fails. We would not, however, wish to see any further delay in the cleanup plans, and we believe that our position is to look at bioremediation as a means of a long-term continuing solution. The town of Acton has always had the same goals as ACES in regard to the cleanup of W.R. Grace, and that is that we want an effective, environmentally safe remedy as soon as possible.
Finance committee?
Finance committee has no recommendation.
No recommendation, all right. Now it's your turn, Mr. Katie.
First, quote William Shakespeare, "First we kill all the lawyers, and we add them to the gourmet stew." Because without the lawyers, we would have had bioremediation about 12 years ago. I first, 12 years ago, I was involved with a company who established the guidelines for the Superfund, for the, managed the Superfund funds throughout the entire country. And I was, one economic project I was working on was the study of the contaminants of paper mill projects, which were next to petrochemicals and things like, rates number two on the list of contaminating companies in the world. And I had the lucky job of evaluating how to use the toxics as a, as a product back into the economy, and we were looking at developing all sorts of wonderful things like vanillin and soap and muri, things that would go into oil wells, and some, digesting them, and that would produce alcohols, and one other, one product you probably are all familiar with, is named called vanillin, which is in most of your Hostess cupcakes now, which is a byproduct of that research. No longer do you have vanilla beans.
It'd be no twinkies for me, boy, I'll tell you.
That whole, that whole study and that whole work went down the drain when bioremediation studies came forward, and just a few months ago, I was involved with a project that's going to be going, a whole paper project, that's what we're looking at in the country of Czechoslovakia, which is going to be 100% bioremediation. The technology is the point today, that there is no question that this technology can eat 100% of all the toxin. And then I went to Helsinki, and viewed a mill up there, where they had tremendous problems, and in a river where all the salmon were gone, there was more paper produced on this river than all of North America, just about combined, well, almost all of North America. And now with bioremediation, they have the salmon aback, there's 100% zero discharge from some of these plants up there that have put this place in place. So it's going to work, we got to get the lawyers off the, you know, off the ship, and into the stew, and we'll pass this one, okay?
Mr. Putnam.
Mr. Moderator, almost two weeks ago, when this was being discussed at the Water District meeting, I was muzzled, as you are here, and so I want to speak my piece on this. I have no technical arguments to give, I'm not a chemist. I did, however, learn how to pronounce the name, it's a toughie, bioremediation, and I hope all of you go out of this room being able at least to do that. And so all I want is that you people give this the same support that the people of the Water District did two weeks ago, and I think we'll be going someplace. Thank you.
Mr. Swenson.
Yes, thank you. This sounds like a great idea, but if you'd clarify, if somebody could clarify a couple of items for me, I think I'd feel a little bit more comfortable about it, and maybe other people would as well. So I have four, four questions, basically, and that, old age is wonderful. Let me, let me go through these in order here. As I understand that this process involves putting some sort of organisms into the, into the site, which consume this material, my question is, where do they go when lunchtime is over? What do they do when they run out of food?
Why don't we take that question first? I think, are you going to be the expert that's going to answer those questions? Great. Okay?
Actually, as Charlotte said, they're consumed, they consume themselves. You add nutrients, they're naturally in the soil, you add nutrients for them to grow at a rapid rate and feed on the toxics, and after they pass away, much like your septic system, they're not there any longer, they're consumed also.
Okay. Okay, you know, we may be envisioning these things. Question two. Question two. One of the byproducts mentioned was CO2, is that correct?
Yes, you, normally, normally it's harmless carb, carbon gases and water.
Does this produce anything akin to the, or contribute to the so-called greenhouse effect?
No, no.
My third question is, who foots the bill for all of this?
The responsible party is the one that now has to foot the bill for the solution that was proposed, the stabilization. The law is that the responsible party pays for this. We are willing to pay for the bench test study, we're raising funds. ACES is, ACES is raising funds for the bench test, and we're hoping that we will get some funds from the Water District also to help us.
And the last question was, the Boston Globe is mentioned here, but I don't see them as being a party to this, sort of a, you know, bystander, much as maybe the Kansas City Star, or the London Times, or who knows? And I was just a little bit curious as to why they were... And I was just a little bit curious as to why they were even mentioned in this.
EPA Region 1 reads the Boston Globe, so we're trying to get the message to them in several ways.
I should hope they read their mail, what are you going to send this to?
[inaudible].
No. Lady at the, lady at the back. Only because I think the question to, the gentleman's question was answered, Mrs. Seagull. Lady at the back.
Ellen Crafton Burchard. I would like to know if this doesn't work and it sounds like a great idea, is WR Grace off the hook?
Yeah, let's let people answer it who have the microphone, sir, go ahead.
No, no, they still have to proceed with the solution that is now proposed by them and by EPA.
Alright. There's only one more gentleman standing, do you have the, do you have the microphone, sir?
Mike Ruses, Elliot Circle. To follow up, I think in a little bit more detail on who foots the bill. If I understood it right, WR Grace would be expected to foot the bill if the results of the tests turn out positive, since if I remember right, the sum of $15 million was mentioned as the reasonable estimate, I'm not surprised their lawyers balked at it. My recollection is there is consent decree in place and in other words, WR Grace has agreed to take certain measures already. Could the Town Council answer for me the practicality of whether or not and exactly how such a change in process, particularly one likely to be extremely expensive, could possibly be enforced against WR Grace at this time? That's one question. Second question, a more minor one, the, there had been some discussion of what happens to all the pollutants. If I understood right, it was said that it all disappears in carbon dioxide and water. Could somebody answer what happened to the chlorine and the metals, which I thought was the really nasty stuff?
I, I think one of the questions, Mike, is directed at you, I'm not sure that the second is though.
I'm quite sure the second wasn't. The, the consent decree basically requires Grace to clean it up. The manner in which they clean it up is ultimately up to EPA. So that this, this is directed in part to persuade EPA to use and to require this method rather than the one they have required.
Now the second half of the question, I'm sure you're the only one here who can answer.
There are no metals in the lagoons we're talking about, they're chlorinated hydrocarbons, those are the primary contaminants. There are metals in other parts, but we're not concerned about that. One more comment if I might?
Sure.
With respect to the timing, which is very important, the, as I mentioned, the major work to date of Grace has been preparing for the remediation. The stabilization they talk about has not even been designed yet. Their schedule is such, that's going to be designed in the summer of 1992 and the implementation of the stabilization is the spring and summer of 1993, so there is time. If the bench test works, two, three months, there's not much going to be lost design-wise. In fact, I'm not even sure they've started design, which is why we're pushing now saying, get the bench test over, yes or no? We're quite confident it's going to be yes, but if it's no, we'll drop the whole thing. So, timing is important to us as well as you.
May I add?
You, you may, I bet we're ready to vote, but if you'd like to make another comment, go right ahead.
I do, I want to tell Mr. Gresser that the $15 million bill for bio remediation, we're not sure exactly what it'll be, will probably be less than their cost for solidifying, carrying, toting soil, covering it up, et cetera, et cetera.
Alright, put us vote. All in favor of the motion as well on Article 32 and those amended, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. O C, we are now going to move on to Article 33. Mrs. Stuntz moves that a regional school district planning committee be appointed as set forth in the warrant. Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, Mrs. Stuntz. Excuse, oh, sorry, go ahead.
There's a handout that is out on the table that was here last night that you might follow along with, it's a blue handout that says Article 33, Regional School District Planning Committee. And that's to sort of explain what I'm doing up here. This is a regional school district planning committee proposal. This is a vote to comply with a state statute to appoint a regional school district planning committee. It is not a vote to regionalize. I am not asking you to vote on the feasibility of regionalization with Maynard. This is merely to give you options. This vote gives us the legal ability to present all the options of regionalization with Maynard. These options will be presented for a vote at Town Meeting on June 4th. That will be a special Town Meeting within the annual Town Meeting on June 4th. The options we are going to present at that time are for a kindergarten through grade 12. The reason why we are only presenting options kindergarten through grade 12 are the following First of all, we feel that a K through 12 district, it provides educational consistency for the Maynard, Maynard students coming into the system. This would mean that there would be consistency throughout the curriculum, K through 12, and there would not be a jump or change at grade seven. Our options are basically a 7 through 12 system, which is what we have now, or K through 12, or the K through 12 options I'm going to show you. The second reason why we want to offer just a K through 12 regionalization to you as an option at the June 4th meeting are that is that with K through 12, we would be able to eliminate one whole administrative structure. That means, for instance, if we only offered a 7 through 12 region with this regionalization, there would still have to be in Maynard, a superintendent, administrative support and that sort of thing. If we go K through 12, not only will we have the education and curriculum consistency, but we will also have only one administrative unit, one administrative staff. That would mean a much bigger savings in terms of economies of scale, which is one of the reasons why we are looking at this as an option. The third reason that we wish to offer only K through 12 options is that it gives significant increases in the regional incentive aid with full regionalization. I don't know how many of you were present at the Town Meeting last year when we had a special Town Meeting to vote on K through 12 regionalization with Boxborough, but at that time, I presented several slides to indicate that K through 12 regionalization would give us much more regional incentive aid and was much more financially feasible than our current 7 through 12 system. The same thing goes for this year. The two K through 12 options that we would like to present at the June 4th meeting are the following. The first option is K through 12 regionalization with all three towns. That means all children in Acton, Boxborough and Maynard would be in one single regional school district, K through 12. This is by far the cleanest, easiest option if the three towns voted and it would be the easiest to do. This would be achieved through an amendment to the current agreement. We have been meeting all winter to formalize that amendment and get it set. We have done this, we have an amendment to that, to the current agreement which is a K through 12 option, all three towns, Acton, Boxborough, Maynard. This would be the first option. However, we do know that Boxborough last year by 27 votes did not approve regionalizing with us for their K through six students. It is likely, I don't know whether it's likely or not, it is possible this would happen again. Our question at this point was, would we just jettison the whole idea if this happened or was there another option that we could formulate that has a K through 12 regionalization to get the three advantages that I just mentioned, but allows Boxborough not to have a K through six regionalization if they don't want it? This is the option that we need a regional school district planning committee for. The first portion of this option is a 7 through 12 regionalization with the three towns. Maynard would be added to the 7 through 12 current district. This is also achieved through an amendment of the current agreement. Plus, there would be a K through six regionalization between, with Acton and Maynard alone. This would be achieved by setting up a second, second regional school district, which would mean that Acton would be in two different regional school districts. It would be in a regional school district with Maynard, K through six, and then another regional school district with Maynard and Boxborough, 7 through 12. We cannot do this without a regional school planning committee. This, it's state law, it's by state statute, we cannot offer this option to you June 4th unless we have had a regional school district planning committee that is appointed by the moderator before we offer that option to you. I would like you, if you would please, vote for this regional school district planning committee so that we will be able to offer to you the two K through 12 options of regionalizing with Maynard on June 4th at the Town Meeting. There will be an informational townwide forum to give you information on the regionalization proposals on May 16th at 7:30 at the Ray Gray Junior High School. I would encourage you all to come to that forum to be informed about regionalization with Maynard. I would also encourage you to come back on June 4th and vote. Just to reiterate, this is a vote to comply with a state statute to appoint a regional school district planning committee. It is not a vote to regionalize. I would ask you to please vote for this regional committee so that we are able to offer you the options that we feel are reasonable at the June 4th Town Meeting.
Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen supports this. We believe that they should vote for this study committee so that a full range of options can be presented. We've been following in principle and philosophy what's been going on this winter along with the Finance Committee through our participation in the Coordinating Committee and I would like to commend the school committee in general and Lee Stuntz in particular who have soldiered on with these various proposals for regionalization to attempt to bring this matter before the meetings in the various towns. And whether or not ultimately any, any particular version of this is adopted or any of it is adopted and whatever your views are, I think you should all recognize that this is a, an effort to achieve economies of scale and management and efficiency in response partly to the economic pressures we're all facing now and partly looking towards better education of our children. And it involves or will involve, if it's implemented, some giving up of some small attributes of traditional control for more macro management, but I think these times are, times have changed and we should be examining all these things and we wish you will support this. And the, the Selectmen have been presented with the draft agreements and indeed we expect that we will have them on our agenda next Tuesday night and then maybe for May or two after that, so if anybody wants to come to those meetings and say anything while we mull over those agreements, we'd be happy to see you there too. Please support this.
Finance Committee, Mr. Sanford.
Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee at its March 20th meeting voted to move, request an amendment to this article and I would like to make a motion for that.
Yes, is that microphone on? Excuse me? It's not on, it's on now.
The Finance Committee at its March 20th meeting voted to make a motion to amend this article by inserting the words after, "School Committee" and "One Member of the Finance Committee." And I so move.
May, may it?
Let me see if I understand the amendment correctly. After the word "School Committee" in line three, you would add, "And One Member of the Finance Committee?"
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
Do I hear a second to that amendment? Alright. It's been moved and seconded. You can speak to your amendment, Mr. Sanford, if you'd like.
Mr. Moderator, while the decisions to regionalize are not, certainly not all driven by financial reasons, we feel that the financial impact of regionalization will be great and we feel that planning for the decision-making should have onboard a member of the Finance Committee, duly appointed by the Town Moderator as one of its members, in order that the reception, evaluation and development of the financial matters can be properly screened.
Mr. Hunter.
The Board of Selectmen has no objection to the amendment.
Mr. Stuntz.
Well, since this is the first I've heard of it, I don't know whether I have an objection or not. The Regional District Planning Committee is a very specific committee set up by the General Laws. The only recommend, the only requirement of that committee is that it have a school committee member on it. I, I certainly don't have any objection to having a Finance Committee member on it. I don't have a feeling that what we will be taught, what, what we will be doing in this committee is looking at, very specifically at one agreement, a K through six agreement. We will be meeting with members of the Maynard Regionalization or Regional School Planning Committee to discuss an agreement which probably would be very, very similar to the agreements we have already given the Board of Selectmen and given the towns of Boxborough and Maynard. I don't think it's necessary, but I certainly have no objection to our fine members of the Finance Committee. Whether it presents a restriction that's unnecessary is another question.
Any other comment on the amendment? Mrs. Zorchevsky.
I would like to offer a thought.
I'm sorry, you'd like to offer it, what? I'm sorry, you'd like to offer it.
A thought. If you're going to have a three-member committee and one has to be a financial expert, then that cuts down two people whose main concern is education to one, well, to two rather than three. I don't know if this will help, but if there is going to be a member of the committee who is from the Finance Committee, then I would suggest making this a committee of four rather than three, if that's possible.
I don't, maybe we can have a legal opinion. This is a very specific committee in the statute that there, you need to have a three-person regional school district planning committee. I don't know whether, by making it four, whether we would, I'm all, I totally agree with you about the educational purpose of this, but I don't know whether by making it four, we would in point of fact.
I'm sorry, we have an amendment to add a member of the Finance Committee. We're not talking about four. There's no amendment on the table to do that. Perhaps we could get a comment on the floor though from the town council if he is, wishes to talk to that, but I would like to stick to the amendment if we can. Mr. Callahan, can this be a committee of four?
I don't have the statute in front of me, so I would hesitate unless Ms. Stuntz has it in front of her.
I do not.
I'd hesitate to say.
In any event, we have a motion on the floor to add, to make one of the members of the committee of three to be a member of the Finance Committee. Has there any other comment on that amendment? Mr. Katie.
Absent information saying we can amend this to add more people, we have a nine-member board of Finance Committee. Having somebody on the committee gives you no greater right than having the committee itself as a Finance Committee. And I'd rather see us have the people more concerned with the educational aspects of this program and all of you can attend the meetings at your leisure and at your desires and not be limited yourself to one participant to these meetings. I think we should go with the original thing and defeat the amendment.
Other comment on the amendment?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, William Kingman, 65, Estorbrook Road. Years ago when I served on the Finance Committee, we did put two Finance Committee members along with the school committee members and their Finance Committee members in order to get a far, a far better grasp of what the costs of the schools was creating in the town. I think it worked very well. I think both committees learned a great deal. As I hear of the discussion tonight, I think there's going to be a cost if we regionalize. I don't see how we can avoid it. And it would seem to me to have a member from the Finance Committee there in the discussions. As I read the motion, it said only one had to be a school committee member. So I would say that I think this is a good idea, and I'd urge you to vote for it.
Mrs. Finkelman.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I would like to agree with the gentleman who just perceived me for several reasons. First of all, I think one of the whole reasons we got into this regionalization issue is economic. The educational issue's of course a primary, but I think finance has come in pretty strongly second. I also think that in the past, Finance Committee's been quite roundly chastised for not showing enough initiative in looking at issues before the town that have financial impact. And I commend them for wanting to put someone on this committee. I would also hope that whoever would either volunteer or you would appoint would also have some vague interest in the educational aspect as well as the financial. And so I don't think we're going to lose any educational benefit by having a finance person on. I think it's much easier for someone to keep track if they attend committee meetings than if they have to hear it at Finance Committee meetings. So I'd urge you to support the amendment.
Other comment on the amendment? Seeing no one standing, we will vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All say no?
No.
The motion is carried. We're back discussing the motion as amended.
Mr. Moderator.
Where are we?
The Finance Committee.
I'm sorry, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Now, you know, how can you take any other position but to recommend it after you've just put an amendment on it? Struck me, if it failed anyway, could have pointed where I would have thought if I wanted to. I'll recommend the job, I mean, I recognize the gentleman at the back. He's been standing some time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Raj Shudlam from Buchester, Jive, and Anken. I'd like to ask Ms. Stuntz what the effect of the passage of question five last November will be on regional aid. I know that there was some question as to whether the amount of regional aid would continue to be the same if question five passed, and it did last November.
That, I'll briefly answer that. It sort of has a side interest to this. There, as I understand it, there has been agreement on both sides of the table with the governor's side, Democrats, Republicans, everybody, that there was no real intention to take out regional state aid. I know of at least three separate bills in front of the legislature, all of which reinstate regional incentive aid, which is chapter 71 money, which is what we're talking about. I am not sure of their status right at the moment. However, we have been repeatedly reassured there is no intent to have taken out regional incentive aid.
I'll recognize. Mr. Finkelman and then Dr. Donald.
Yes, I would like to echo some of Mr. Hunter's words in commending the school committee in trying to be creative and coming before us with a second regionalization attempt, even though they spent so much effort last year that didn't turn, to be, turn out to be fruitful. But I'd just like to take this opportunity to ask the Selectmen why we don't see any comparable efforts on their, on their behalf to look at regionalization issues in such areas as police, fire.
I'm sorry, Mr. Finkelman, that's out of the, okay. Dr. Donald. It was a nice try though, Craig.
Mrs. Stuntz, maybe I've not been paying attention, but maybe, is this only for Maynard K through six? Did somewhere sometime we take Maynard six through 12? And did we last year do something about Boxborough K through six?
Okay. Last year, we had an article before you at a special town meeting which would regionalize, totally regionalize K through 12 Acton and Boxborough, which would have added Boxborough K through six to our present region. Okay? So that, they are already in seven through 12, so that's what would have been added. They defeated it. We resoundingly voted for it. All we are talking about here with this article is the ability to write a K through six regional agreement between Acton and Maynard. That's all we're talking about. We need this committee in order to write that agreement which would set up a second regional school district.
Mr. Moderator, may I ask?
Yes, that's down.
How about Maynard six through 12?
Maynard seven through 12 would be included, that those, in order to get a full K through 12, option two, I don't know whether you have the blue sheet there. Option two, in order to get a full K through 12 region with Maynard, if Boxborough does not vote for the regionalization K through six again, but only votes for a seven through 12 region with Maynard, we are then offering a K through six region with Maynard in conjunction, conjunction with a seven through 12 Acton, Boxborough, Maynard region.
So we have to come back again?
We all have to. This is not a vote to regionalize. This is only a vote to set up a committee to give us the chance to give you an agreement on June 4th.
Planning for Maynard six.
K through six. K through six. That's it. That's all it is.
And we're missing something.
The seven through 12, this, this committee has nothing to do with seven through 12. Any regionalization which includes seven through 12 is achieved by an amendment to the current agreement. We don't need a regional school planning committee to do this. We can do it by authority of the present regional school committee.
For Maynard.
Maynard has its own regional school district planning committee with whom we as a regional school committee have been negotiating to set up amendments to our agreement. To add them to the district. As long as it's legal. That's what we're trying to make it.
Mr. Katie.
With the majority left, I'd like to make an amendment to this article to add four instead of three member committee.
I, I don't know whether that's legal, and I'm not going to take the motion until I
Do we suspend it until we get an answer?
I'm not going to accept it until I know that it's legal.
You're asking for a lot of work from two people now to be done. No, the committee person's not going to be doing the work that the other people are going to be doing.
Well, I, I think that's, I'm a premature aside.
Can I make an amendment conditioned upon approval, the authority of making it, that it's legal, that will be added to four?
Let me ask, let me turn to Mr. Hunter for some help perhaps on this subject.
Mr. Moderator, the question as to whether a Selectman should be put on the committee came up at one Selectman's meeting, and I pulled the General Laws and I read it, and unfortunately, there's no copy closer than the Royal Library at the moment. And my recollection was, and I could be wrong, but my recollection was that the statute specified a three-person committee, one of whom was to be a school committee person. So I tend to think based on that memory that enlarging the scope of the committee would probably get us in problems with the General Law. I wish I had a copy, but I don't.
All right, Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator, is there a cost involved in doing this planning? I'm thinking specifically of legal fees. Are we paying lawyers to prepare amendments, and if so, how much?
We are not paying lawyers to prepare amendments for this vote or anything that has to do with this vote, because this vote would produce a separate agreement that is not the same thing, that is not an amendment to the current agreement. In the process of looking at regionalization, there are lawyer's fees involved in looking at any agreement to make sure that it's legal. The amended agreement which we have formalized between Acton, among Acton, Boxborough, and Maynard has been looked at by lawyers. However, the lawyer's fees were kept to a minimum because it was predicated on the agreement which we had last, we formulated last year, the amended agreement we formulated last year with Boxborough. So that, that there were very few changes in that basically for the K through 12 agreement.
Maybe I have to make myself clear. This includes preparing for perhaps a separate new distinct regional district, K through six with Maynard. That's part of this planning process.
That's right.
The plus thing.
But you, but you also have to realize, Charlie, we've already talked, we've already, we've already done a K through 12, we've already done a seven through 12. A K through six, having already been through these two processes, a K through six is not going to be radically different from what we've already negotiated twice for the K through six. Once for Boxborough.
I'm asking a question.
No, I don't, I mean, yes, there are legal, there have to, I mean, Henry Hall has to look at, has to look at the agreement or we wouldn't present it to town meeting.
Can we have some sense, does the school committee pay for this? I'm just trying to make myself clear. I mean, is there a budget? Do we have any sense of how much money is being spent to accomplish this?
Bill, do you know how much we spent last year?
It is coming out of the school committee budget, I'm assuming? Okay.
Mr. Ryan. I don't know the precise number charted last year, but I'd say it was around $4,000 that we spent in terms of Rox Gray reviewing the amended agreement of K-12. And as Lee has said, the amended, either K-12 or 712 agreement is predicated on what we had last year, and K-6 I would assume would look much the same. But Henry Hall would have to review it before it came to the town meeting, as I think the lawyers for the three towns would also, or in this case for the two towns. The town councils of both Acton and Maynard, they want to review it.
Gentleman at the back.
Thank you. I'd like to move to amend this motion by adding to the motion at the end to direct the school committee to appoint a six-member committee of students and parents to study the social and educational impact on students that regionalization would have. And I'd like to speak to the amendment, Mr. Moderator. If it's in order.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to think of if it's in order or not. Let me take just a moment and confirm. Yes?
Is he a registered voter?
I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a suggestion to you. In my judgment and that of the town council, this is within the scope of the motion, of the article. I think it's probably something that you ought to take up with the regional school committee, however, as opposed to making an amendment here. And prior to accepting your amendment, I'll ask Mrs. Stuntz to comment on that, and if she would care to.
Sure, glad to.
Go ahead.
Raj, I think that perhaps the committee you're talking about and the concern you're expressing has much more to do with the high school than it does with the K through six district. And that certainly, you do have a legitimate point in terms of looking at the effect of regionalization. And I think that is a subject to discuss with the school committee, and I certainly would be happy to discuss it with you at any point. I question whether or not it's appropriate to tack that on to a K through six when you're really not talking, with a K through six, you're really talking about keeping kids to be educated in their own towns, as we did last year with Boxborough. The current agreement that we have been working with keeps kids to be educated in their own hometowns, K through six.
Okay, let me start. Hearing that, do you want to proceed with your amendment?
I think I'll defer to the twinkie wisdom of the town moderator and his colleagues and let the school committee bring it up in school committee. Thank you.
Fine. Mrs. Segoff.
May I have a question?
May you call the question? May you call the question? Yes, you may. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded to cut off debate. All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
All say no?
No.
Debate is cut off. We will vote now on the motion as amended under Article 33. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Mr. Moderator? I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that covers all of the articles that we can cover up until this point, and I think Mr. Hunter will make a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn this town meeting until 7:30 PM on Tuesday, June 4, 1991, in this auditorium.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of adjournment until that time, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. The motion is, the meeting is adjourned.